Okay, I'll talk a little bit. I will talk a little bit about the program during that as her elementary teacher. Anyway, my name is Sandy Whistler. I am from Lake Mills. I was an educator in Lake Mills. I taught first grade, second grade, third grade, and at the end of my career, I was a reading teacher for a number of years. I also am president of our local public education advocacy group called Citizen Advocates for Public Education. We have been in existence in Lake Mills for about 13 years, and our goal is to do a variety of things, from facilitating and helping our local school district, advocating for our students, for facilities, and for our teachers, and also to help inform the community about current educational issues. Over the years, we have hosted a number of candidate forums in Lake Mills that were very successful in accomplishing that goal, and so we were very happy to be invited to host your event tonight, so that we can provide that same opportunity for the citizens of Cambridge. I'm happy to introduce our moderator for the evening, Marilyn Townsend. Marilyn is a member of the League of Women Voters who regularly volunteers to interview candidates for local offices. She is a lawyer who currently serves as a commissioner for the State of Wisconsin Labor Industry and Review Commission, and in that position, she decides appeals from administrative law judge decisions in workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, and discrimination cases. Ms. Townsend has served as a local government official, first as a trustee for the village of Shorewood Hills for 12 years, and then as a municipal court judge for six years. And I will now hand the mic over to her, and she will continue with the forum. Again, thank you for being here.
Testing, one, two, three. Is it coming through? Yeah. Okay, great. And the sun just came out, the rain has stopped, and it is a joyous evening to have so many people turn out. As Sandy has mentioned, I served as a local elected official for 12 years as a village trustee, and I, like the candidates here, was at candidate forums where we would invite a volunteer from the League of Women Voters to come in and attempt to facilitate the question and answer period. And I must say, this turnout tonight is far more than we had in our communities, so I applaud the city of Cambridge for that. Let me explain how this is going to go today, the timing, and then, as I read this, if I deviate from it, anyone here can correct me, because it's my intention to follow this timing as best we can. From 6:00 to 6:10, it'll be a little later, because we're getting a few minutes later, there'll be welcome and introductions. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce himself, and I will ask each candidate to include your connections to the school district of Cambridge, community groups you're involved in, and your perspective on what is the role of a school board member. Then, for the greater part of the hour, each candidate will have two to three minutes to respond to each of the five questions. My colleague Sandy will be keeping time, and she will give the candidates periodic warnings, and then a five-second warning, and we'll be police officers on time. If you're in the middle of a sentence, finish the sentence, don't finish the thought. Okay. And then, in the remaining time period, each candidate will have two to three minutes to make a final statement, and then Sandy will close this by thanking the candidates for their participation, as I will as well, because as those of you who have run for office, and I'm sure many of you here in the audience have, you know it's not easy. You put yourself out there, you put your family out there, everyone has advice as to what you're doing right and what you're doing wrong, and our democracy depends on candidates like this, who will run for office and, when elected, will serve. So I know, before we begin, let's just give all three of them a round of applause.
Marilyn, if I could, we are in agreement, at least on this, that we're willing to hang around after the formal portion of the forum, and just mill around and visit. So no need to rush off. If you've got a question, please talk to us.
All right. And the order in which I spoke to all three candidates previously, and the order in which we're going to take the initial introduction, will be from this side going to this side. Then, the first question will be from this side, second question, the middle, third question, the third. So we will keep taking turns on who goes first, and everyone is in agreement. So with that, let me repeat what I said earlier, and we will begin with Jesus, and then go to Jim and Jay. So you have two minutes to introduce yourselves. Please include your connections to the school district of Cambridge, community groups you're involved in, and your perspectives on what is the role of a school board member.
First, I just want to thank all of you for being here in the community. I wish I could get this kind of attendance in some of my freshman classes that I teach, that would be wonderful, but really, it shows how much you care about our schools. Thank you to Kate for hosting and coming up with the questions, League of Women Voters for keeping us on time as well. I'll try to do my best, and of course, thank you to Jay and Jim for being here to answer the questions. I'm ready to bring a new perspective to the board. I'm an experienced educator. I've taught at five universities. I have a neat perspective of what students need to prepare, to be prepared for their post-secondary adventures. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in communication. I've worked for a major city police department handling high-profile events in the communication realm. I've also worked at several communication firms, working in crisis communication. I'm passionate about education, and I'm invested in this community. My husband and I moved here to foot down roots and to start a family, so my outlook on the board is not for the next three years, but really for the next 30. I'm working hard to earn each and every one of your trust and your vote on April 2nd. I'm grateful for the endorsements of over 15 local leaders, including six current and former school board members. My four priorities on the board would be to bring a new perspective to the board, a new generation of ideas and leadership, to advocate for all students, especially our most marginalized students, to support evidence-based inclusive curriculum, because that's how we can have our students be the most prepared, and then to enhance communication between the district and the community. All of that while being fiscally responsible. As Jim said, I'm happy to stick around and answer questions. I also have cards in the back. If you can't stick around, you can fill out a question, and I'll follow up with you afterward. Thank you.
This is probably the wrong time to say that, but I would ask everyone if you could hold your applause, except clap for the remaining two, but then go ahead. We're not going to applaud, because we're on a time limit here.
Can I ask the three gentlemen to speak just a little louder, so that we can hear the background?
Absolutely.
Maybe stand up, is it? That would be more.
Yes.
If you could speak a lot louder.
Right. And I think standing up helps, because then it goes over the heads. But having said that, that is our request, do what you please.
I don't know if I'm a bit far away from my notes.
Okay, that's true. Go ahead.
So let me try to check. How is this from the back? Are we okay? All right. My name is Jim Rumbel.
I heard more. A couple of gentlemen said more. Can you get a little louder?
I can get a little louder? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I've been on the school board going on nine years. I really appreciate everybody attending tonight, and the thank yous to the organizers and to the Women, the League of Women Voters, for making this happen for us. As I said before, we're happy to hang around for additional conversations. I'd just like to tell you how I got interested in the school board, and our son Jason had learning disabilities early in his grade school career, and the district was a large district, and we knew nothing about it. But we started to do some research on it and discovered that the district had an amazing amount of resources that we didn't even know existed. And so, my wife and I, Kathy, we partnered with that district. And what happened was, Jason was able to finish high school in a rather grand manner, and also graduate from college. And I must share you that the third-grade teacher told us that he would never finish high school. So that got me interested, and I hoped someday that I would have the opportunity to be on the school board. I have loved every minute of it, even the COVID minutes, which were more like COVID hours. And anyway, I'll tell you a little bit more about myself as we go on. But my hope is that every parent in this district can take advantage of the resources that the district has to offer, regardless of what your kid needs. I guarantee you, they will do their utmost to see that it happens. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna hold this up like this. Can you guys hear me all right back there? I've never been accused of being too quiet, so hopefully not tonight.
Get loud, Jay.
Thanks. Yeah, so I'm Jay Fisher. My wife and I came to the Cambridge area about 16 years ago with our family. We have seven kids. We, our oldest, our only daughter, we have one girl and six boys, and our daughter had graduated just before we moved here, and so we brought all of our seven kids with us, but all of our six boys have been in the Cambridge schools and have either graduated through, four of them have graduated through, and we have two more that are in high school. We have a junior and a freshman. And we came to this area, and I'll talk a little bit more as we get on to the question, kind of the questions that are here after, but there's reasons we came to this Cambridge community, and I'll, let me just say, we love just everything that Cambridge had to offer. And we've been involved just in a lot of things in the community, just through our kids. Our kids have been involved in sports, so football, cross-country, track, so a lot of our time has been spent tending those, helping with things with that, helping with music boosters. We were on Gridiron for a little while, CD players in terms of community events. Our boys have acted with them, and I even threw in two or three years on there as well, and had a great time. And my perspective on the role of a school board member, I have 30 seconds, look, I'm gonna use my time, is that the school board really, members of the school board really are meant to provide a framework that the district can operate under, to make sure that we are putting policies in place that are fair, that are equally metered out, and that to make sure that all parents, all families, all kids are considered in our district. Thank you.
Forward, we want that, and now we will begin, we have five questions, and we will start with Jay Fisher for the first question. Mr. Fisher, as a school board member, what can you do to ensure that all students feel wanted, welcome, and comfortable when they come to the school district of Cambridge to learn? What experience do you have in education and working with students?
Great question. So when I considered this question, the first thing, that's the obvious one, as a school board member, our job is really to set in place the policies that make sure that all students can come to our school and feel welcome, but also come and experience an environment that's free of discrimination, free of abuse, free of harassment. Those are the things, and we need to make sure that we're enforcing, through our school board, that the district is enforcing those policies equally, once again, and make sure that we hold students accountable when they break those policies. I think it's important, one of the things that's very important to me, not only as a school board member, but just as a parent, is that our schools teach the concepts of respect for others, others who are different than us, respect for everyone. That's something we've taught our kids, and something that is important to me as a school board member. And in addition to that, personal responsibility, and that is something that I feel serves kids well, that when they get beyond the K through 12, that they understand that when we make wrong choices, there are consequences to that. And so, so those are the things that are kind of the, more of the clinical things, how do we provide a safe, warm, comfortable environment? But beyond that, it's important as school board members that we set the tone and culture in our schools, that our district can understand, and in turn, can be trickled down to our students, understand that we can disagree sometimes with each other, but we can do that respectfully. And sometimes, when we have disagreements on things, that's okay, but we have to understand that sometimes we have to compromise, sometimes we give a little bit, sometimes we get a little bit. And so, if we can model that to our students and challenge them to be leaders instead of followers, I think we can really set a tone in our schools that we can say to our students, hey, you can make Cambridge a better place to go to school. So really quickly here, my experience with education, I think that was the other thing. I served on, obviously, I've served the last three years on the Cambridge School Board, and that has been a great experience. But before that, I served two years on a school board for a private school, and we grew a startup school from about 40 kids to about 150 kids within two years. In fact, we had to purchase a new school. And the thing that I learned from that is that, from a financial perspective, it's important that we are responsible with the money that is allocated to us. In the case of this small school, it was not tax money, it was money coming out of people's pockets directly, and I would see them in the hallways every day. So they made sure that was spending their money wisely. So those are the things I carried forward. I've already talked about working with kids. I have seven of them at home. Thank you.
Mr. Rumbel, do you need a question?
I do. All right. So the idea of creating a sense of belonging for every child is obviously very important, and it starts at the top. It's a culture that has to be intentional and has to be, you know, starting from the very top of the organization, and that's the administration group. They work for us. So it's important for us to make it crystal clear to them that belonging is a very important aspect of being a student in our district. And we do that by, as Jay even said, by looking at the sort of the rules of engagement, the rules that prevail during the school day, and what the expectations are for the department of students, as well as the staff. So that happens when the administration sees that it happens, and it's up to us to make sure that it is a priority for the administration. During the past eight years of my school board experience, I'm proud to say that our district culture emulates that. We embrace diversity, equity, and inclusiveness every day in the classroom, and that's where the students actually see the rubber meet the road, where they see they are invited, they are included, they are expected to be part of the whole, and it just, that's how it happens for the community. So it is a priority for every school board member that I know very well, and I can assure you that we work on it all the time, and insist that we see it grow even beyond where it is today. I'm the parent of two college graduates, and both of them experienced social, emotional, and academic challenges in their K through 12 years, and as I spoke in my intro, my wife and I understand the importance of parents and the partnership that the parents have with the staff and with the administration, in fact, with the entire school district. And again, I can't emphasize more than I can tonight, that that door is always open. We are always interested in what can be done for your child, and if you think that we're not hearing, then you're not talking to the right folks, because we can guide you to the right people, and we can see to it that your particular case and your child is focused on. So that's a part of our district that counts big. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I think it's really important that we promote a welcoming environment among staff and students that clearly states, all students are welcome. There's difference between saying that and acting on it. There was an LGBTQ resolution a few years ago that was overwhelmingly passed by the board. I would have supported that resolution then, and I would support that resolution now. It sent a strong message to LGBTQ students and families that said, you belong in our district. A student who does not feel safe will not be successful academically. It's hard to learn math when you don't feel safe and supported at school. I've heard from families and teachers that this still is an area that we can work on. We have a lot of different backgrounds with our students in the Cambridge School District, and as Jim said, it's important to set that positive welcoming message and culture from the top down, and it starts with us. I'm a higher education instructor, as I mentioned. I've taught at five universities with very diverse student populations. I've taught adult learners, those who come directly from high school, those with special needs, those from all backgrounds, and really from all around the world. There's an old teaching adage, and some of the teachers will know what I'm talking about, how do we support struggling students while at the same time lifting up those who are excelling? And so, I think it's really important that someone brings an experienced educator's perspective to the board. I empathize with teachers and their ever-increasing demands that they have in the classroom. I talked about this online in some of my policy posts, but it's also important that we prepare students for the various post-secondary paths that they'll take. I teach those who want to go to college, but not everybody needs or wants to go to college, so exposing students and providing them with the opportunities and the trades and the arts is really important. In my hometown of Sheboygan, our area school district did this, partnering with Johnsonville and Kohler, to build new tech areas and provide them with job training. We need to support students, no matter their interests, to be the most successful versions of themselves. Thank you.
All right, we will go on to question number two, and with question two, we will start with Mr. Rumbel. What is your philosophy on teachers and staff as partners and collaborators with district administration and the board when it comes to decisions that affect them and the students? What do you feel are your leadership responsibilities as a school board member?
Thank you. We are elected officials, and we are responsible for the governance of this district, and the oversight of the district administration. So there's, I always think about this as taking two different looks and two disciplines. One is sort of scientific, it's data, it's numbers, and the other is kind of art, and that's where we get into the instruction and the curriculum and the way that we deliver the product to the kids and to the community. So in the science end, you've got, you know, the operations, the budget, all of the numbers, all of the regulations that come out of the state, and all the things that we have to sort of toe the line to and make sure we're in compliance with, and make sure that we've got the best that we can get out of our organization. The other one, once we've sort of established that benchmark, and we know what we've got for funding, what we've got for curriculum, what we've got for extracurriculars, what we have for staffing, what it looks like, and as Jesus said, how do we help channel kids to trades who are not interested in college? All of those things become sort of artistic. How do we mold, you know, that budget? How do we apply that in an equitable manner across the board and catch everybody? Is that possible? Oh, my goodness, it's hard work, but it's our responsibility. And so, it's a balance, you know, we have to go at it, always looking at the hard data, but also looking at the outcomes that we want, and looking at the way it's delivered and the manner in which we foster the growth of every kid in the whole place. And, you know, and lest we forget, our arms reach wide, and they include getting around the staff, and getting around the community, and particularly getting around the parents. So, you know, to me, it's a balancing act. I'll talk a little bit about the funding as we get farther into the questions, and the challenges there, but yeah, I think we're always mindful of those two things. We crunch the numbers, and then we see, how do we apply them to get the best result and the biggest bang for our educational buck? Thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
All stakeholders, including parents, need to feel comfortable coming to the board with any concerns that they have. I use my communication skills and experiences to ensure that those lines of communication are always open. Teachers and staff input should be included as much as possible through every decision-making process and step along the way. The board's role, as Jim was also saying, is really to help set the vision of the district, and then we can enact that through the policy decisions that we make. We are not in the classroom telling teachers how to teach. I trust them to do their job, but any concerns that they have about their ability to teach or to get the resources that they need, they should feel comfortable coming to their administrators and to the board. Cambridge has great teachers, they have great administrators. I've been able to meet with all of our administrators one-on-one to learn the unique challenges that their buildings and their programs face. Again, setting a positive vision from the top down is important. So my vision is to update, to have up-to-date technology, have up-to-date facilities, have up-to-date curriculum, be inclusive and welcoming to families and new staff, especially for retention rates, which we'll talk about later, and I will advocate for all these things through the policy decisions that I make. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, so I think my response to this question is kind of a mixture. I think, you know, Jim kind of, I think, addressed it more kind of from the, more the logistical standpoint, and I think Jesus was more kind of on the relational and the communication part. I'm kind of on that same track. I looked at this more relationally. So when we look, and I've talked, we've been out in the community and talked with, talked with our community, but also talked with our educators too. I've, I talk with them, just in an informal setting, and I think one of the biggest things that they would look for is better communication between, you know, between the things that they need to the administration and up to the board, and how do they make sure that those concerns are getting addressed? And so, I really kind of roll back to before I was on the board, because I have some perspective there as a parent, because one of the things that we notice that comes full tilt, and when parents don't feel like their concerns are being met, a lot of times, that's because they'll express something to an educator, to their child's teacher, and nothing will seem to happen. And in fact, something is happening, but there's a roadblock somewhere. And so, we learned from that, that it's important that there is close communication, and there needs to be that perspective from a parental standpoint, that there's close direct communication, and we're able to do this in a small school district. I think it's tougher when you get in larger school districts, but we have a unique opportunity in this school district of Cambridge to really kind of foster more of those direct personal relationships. So now, moving into my role as a board member, you know, I don't view it a lot differently, except that you're really from the other end of things. You know, Jesus was talking about how we need to help facilitate that communication. We set a vision. I agree with that. I think that there are things that the board can do, but there always needs to be that respect for the chain of authority that happens between educators and the administration, to make sure that we're not stepping in there and putting our, you know, interfering with that, but really kind of setting the framework once again. So that's kind of how I view it. We are really kind of troubleshooters. If there are problems with a communication line, then I think a board should get together and discuss ways to remove those obstacles, to help teachers, help administrators to communicate more effectively, because I think when we're able to do that, we have a much stronger school system, and I always go back to the parental role. I always want to feel that parents can go to their teachers and feel like their concerns are going to be met. That's how we have a stronger school system, and so, that's my hope, is that if elected for three more years, that is something And so that's my hope is that if elected for three more years, that is something that will be a priority with me. So, thank you.
We will go on now to the third question, which is, which we will begin with Mr. Rivera. When making decisions for the district, what will be the top three considerations you take into account? How will you ensure you have all of the information necessary to be fully informed and able to consider all of the ripples of each choice before you?
The first is we have to be fiscally responsible. As you all know, we passed a referendum, your taxes went up, so you definitely know about that. So we have to use our taxpayer dollars responsibly. The second is every decision that we're making, it should be improving student outcomes in some way. If I'm looking at a decision, I say, what assurances are there? What's the return on investment that this will improve our student outcomes? And if it doesn't, then maybe we need to explore other options. And the third is that it should be inclusive, evidence-based, and support all students and staff. And again, as Board members, we can enact that through our policy decisions. Board members need to be prepared and dedicated to serve. Since last cycle, I've been to over 50 school board meetings. I've had one-on-ones with all the administrators to learn the unique challenges that their buildings and their programs face and the aspirations that they have for them as well. I've met with a former superintendent as well as school board members to learn the history of challenges that face our community and how the school district has handled them in the past. I've earned many of their endorsements. I'm a detail-oriented person, I'm very type A, and I don't do anything less than 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
As a school board member, I basically say the decision-making process for the school district is one that's extremely important. It's a big part of our job. And we always look at it, or I certainly always look at it, as something that requires careful and deliberate consideration. As Board members, we must do careful and full research of issues, putting aside our personal opinions as the main driver. We must be driven by policy and law and where law is not applicable, because that's the case in a lot of times, try to use our best sound judgment that takes all sides into consideration. So these are the three things that I have been and would consider to, would continue to consider when making decisions on behalf of the Cambridge School District. One, is this in the best interest of the school district and the community for which it represents? And I think it's important to remember that we are representatives. We're here tonight asking for your vote to be your representatives. We are asking to earn your vote. Not that you give that to us haphazardly, but we earn it. And so when we ask that question, we need to ask that question very seriously. Is this in the best interest of the constituents for which I represent? We're not going to make everybody happy, but we have to make the best decision based on the evidence that's there before us. Secondly, does it strike the necessary balance in consideration of the best interest and safety of all children? And I stress all children in the district and not just certain groups. As a school board member, I have to take off my hat and set aside my personal feelings on things. And we have to have the hat of saying, we are here representing all children. We are here representing the protection and the interest of all of our kids. And it's important that we do that because all of our kids are deserving of equal consideration. I don't care who you are. And I say that with a lot of passion in my heart because each one of my kids, I have seven kids, and not one of them is the same. They have different personalities. They have different talents. So. And thirdly, if a financial decision isn't fiscally sound and defendable to our community, who pays their hard-earned tax dollars to finance for the betterment of our community? When we sit and we approve a budget, we have to always keep in mind that these dollars are coming from the pockets of you, all of you who live in this district, go to work every day, work hard, and pay your tax dollars. So it's important that we were able to defend those expenditures to you and say, yes, this was necessary. And the referendum was one of those. It was a tough decision, but we knew it was fiscally necessary. And so we're, you know, let's make sure we're spending those dollars wisely now. Thank you.
Mr. Wombley.
It's Womble, actually, but it's all right.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
In England, it was Wombley. But then, but then we moved.
It's my British name. Wombo.
Yeah, Wombo. Yeah, no problem. Well, when I, when I first read this question, I, you know, there are so many lists of the top three this and the top three that. And you, and I could name, you know, 10 different lists of them easily. But I thought I'd better go back to my campaign literature, which I had written before this question came out, because I had the three in there. So I'm going to, I'm going to repeat them to you. The first one is offer each student every opportunity to seek and find their learning passion and personal potential. Every kid is different, like Jay said. The pros in the, in the classrooms have, they can do that magic to find out who that kid is and help the kid find out who they are. And we are in the adaptation business and we're also teaching every child in our, in our district about adapting. That's the nature of the world. And so that is incredibly important. Advocate for a balanced learning experience for the whole child, focusing on social, emotional, and academic skills. I always think of this as kind of the three-legged stool. If you don't do one of them, the thing tips over. It doesn't work. You don't get a whole person out of it. You don't get a whole adult. You get somebody who missed a third of the deal. And we can't let that happen. Social and emotional learning and education is as critical as academics. And when we do all three of them well, we turn out great graduates who are, who are ready for the world and are going to be, and are going to be the leaders that we talk about. And last, I have insist on transparency and involvement in important district matters by students, parents, and district citizens. This is the biggest deal in a town this size that there is. This district has more employees, more influence, more ties, more connections, more controversy, more, we're it. And, and this is what, small villages and towns take such pride in their, in their schools and we have to earn it every day. And so it is incredibly important that, that we are inclusive, not just with our students, but with our community. So, thank you.
We'll go on to question number four, which we will begin with Mr. Fisher. What are your thoughts on the curriculum development process and assuring that curricula are culturally responsive and inclusive?
Well, I believe that our curriculum needs to be centered on educational, academically-focused excellence, that we stress science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, along with English and second languages. Those must be core to our curriculum. So I'm a firm believer in that we teach academics first. We have to make sure that we do not skimp on the academics. We're here to educate. I'm in favor of peer-reviewed curriculum development process that needs to be based in science when it comes to the academics. So I'm an engineer and the things that I do are based in science. I am very much science-driven and I believe it serves the best interest of a school that the academics be driven and be based in science. Under human growth and development, this gets into, this gets into some nuance that I want to talk about a little bit. So school districts must follow the Wisconsin laws when it comes to parental notification and opt-out avenues without district resistance. And I think we do this pretty well. My wife and I have experienced that personally and have had to opt out on a few things and we're thankful for that. We're glad that that option is there. So that needs to follow state law. I particularly wanted to point out the human growth and development curricula that must be developed, once again, based on state law. There's state law that's, that talks about how we remain culturally responsive and inclusive, I believe. And that state law says that we form ad hoc committees. And I've talked about this, maybe you've heard about it before. But the state law says it has to be lawfully representative. And I think that's so important because it is important, if you want to talk about culturally representative, we have to make sure that we have adequate representation within our communities, to make sure that we're capturing all voices when it comes to things that fall outside of the realm of the science-based academics. And I'm talking about getting into more of the things that are kind of the cultural. I'm for supporting all students, but I want to make sure that all voices are captured. So it must be lawfully representative. Those ad hoc committees must be subject to open meeting laws. We need to conduct those in open, open sight. They must be reviewed and approved by the Cambridge School District Board of Education. This is, I think, a serious responsibility of a Board of Education, that we do monitor that. We are also representative of our community. So we are responsible for making sure that our ad hoc committees are representative as well and follow the law. Curriculum that falls outside of the realm of core academics must be representative of the community. And I have to say it, we can't be held captive to a group of experts, quote unquote, who claim to know more than parents when it comes to raising their own children. How much time do I have? Five seconds. Thank you.
Mr. Wombley.
I'm the Chair of the Curriculum Committee currently. And I'm proud to say that our monthly meetings are where discussions take place in a balance of academic effectiveness as well as social and emotional development and learning. Again, back to the three-legged stool, need all three. Resulting instruction that we get when we have all three is informed by the need to address each student as unique, a whole person, not just a standardized test taker. Curriculum and teaching methodologies have changed dramatically since I was in school and they changed so rapidly, it's hard to keep up with. Technology, the access to technology, online classes, online research, regulated AI, and rethinking paths to the trades are things that we talk about along with many others every month to keep our curriculum fresh and on point and culturally relevant. It's important to our district to have a long-range curriculum plan, even though the changes happen rapidly and we aren't really in control of what the legislature demands from us. But, you know, we're nimble and we can adjust. But just like putting a long-range plans in for building and maintenance is, is critical to the budget, putting a long-range plan in for curriculum is equally important. Buildings and equipment wear out and so does curriculum. So we've got to stay on top of that always. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
It's important to note that many of the changes in curriculum are mandated by state statutes. So it's first and foremost important that the district is in compliance with the law. We don't have an overly diverse community and student population. Ninety-two percent of our students are white, so minority group representation on the Board is really important. And I'd work to ensure that all voices are heard and respected in that process. It's a diverse world outside of Cambridge and students need to be prepared for that. On the Board, I can promise you, no March my student would be forgotten. Teaching goes beyond just reading, writing, and math. And as Jim has said, social, emotional learning is really an important part, too. This was recently done with updates to the human growth and development process where a group of staff and community members came together to update and make changes. I thank them for their service to the community. They updated the curriculum, they made it more inclusive, and they followed the law. That type of community work is important and it makes our district better. While I do have experience in curriculum development, I'm not an expert on every subject. That's why I trust the science, I trust subject matter experts, and most of all, I trust our teachers. The Board does not create curriculum. We approve recommendations from experts. Our students will benefit always from receiving the most up-to-date and current information in curriculum. Thank you.
Now we will go to our final question and we will start with Mr. Wombley. What do you view as the greatest strengths and the greatest challenges of the school district of Cambridge?
The greatest challenge is easy. It's not, I mean, it's not easy to tolerate, it's just easy to identify. The, the lack of funding for all school districts from the state legislature puts every school district in a bind. And it makes us go out too frequently for referendums just to pay the operating expenses of our, of the school district. It puts all the curriculum at risk. It puts all of the activities and extracurriculars at risk. We, we need that to change. We need to be advocates for education, but we also need to be advocates for paying for it. And right now, our state, where we once were often in the top 10 or 12, at least in the nation, in funding education, we are now in the lower half of the middle. And that's happened in the last, just basically the last 20 years. So that, that, you know, it affects everything. It affects every topic that we've talked about tonight of what's in the budget. Because that means, that determines what resources we have and then that determines what, how we can spread those resources out. So there is no other issue, not to me at least, that comes anywhere close to the lack of funding coming out of the state legislature. The strengths are fun to talk about. And I, I'll just, I'll just say, the first one that always comes to mind is this community. Look at this room. We don't do this very often. And look at, it's full. And that's great. We're engaged. We want to know. We, we want to support. We want to be doing the right thing. And here we are tonight, doing exactly that. This, this community, which stretches from Oakland Township to Christiana, to Rockdale and parts of Lake Mills and Deerfield, over the years has shown such great support for the schools. Show up at events, vote, vote for referendums, volunteer for boosters, clubs, and PPO projects, and send cash, cash money. Every month, we read the donations that come from this community to the district in forms of money. And it happens every month. It's marvelous. The next strength is our awesome school, school teachers and our support staff. They're the reasons that people open enroll to this district. They produce student outcomes that other, other people living in other districts want for their kids. And we are, we are the beneficiaries of that. They help us offset some lack of funding, actually. It helps a great deal. And I got to give a nod to KT, Koshkand on Trails, because they get more open enrollment than the rest of the district combined. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
I have two major challenges that I see that the district's currently facing. The first one is obviously fiscal challenges. We passed a referendum, but the cost of living continues to rise and funding that we get from the state continues to fluctuate. As Jim has noted earlier and elsewhere, this is an area for board advocacy. I'd be happy to join Jim and other Board members going to the state legislature to advocate for additional public education funding. With increased enrollment, we do get increased funding. So I support open enrollment. There are a lot of families that come into our district, especially for our superb student services teams. So I'd be more than happy to provide them with additional resources to expand that team if necessary. And then I would look to find other creative solutions to the funding challenges that we have. The second is that there are voices in this community who feel like they are not being heard. And as I have been doing with campaigning, I am always open with my lines of communication and I'd be willing to keep those open as it relates to my roles and responsibilities as a school board member. The strengths, I'm going to echo Mr. Wombley, I mean, Mr. Womble. Our students, I, they're so dedicated to their studies, they're so dedicated to their extracurriculars, and they're really dedicated to our community. We have an amazing staff, they're asked to do a lot. And we have an 89% retention rate among our teachers. It's almost twice the state average, which is just amazing. We're doing something right in the district. Our administration, many of them are pulling double duty, having both principal jobs and other roles and responsibilities. Our Board overwhelmingly works for the best interest of students in a very inclusive way. As Jim said, we haven't talked much about KT tonight, but it's an alternative learning environment and it's really helpful to a lot of students. And of course, our community, again, you being here just shows how much that you care and how much that you support our schools and who you want to have on the school board.
Mr. Fisher.
So, yeah, so I'm going to echo the other two in terms of the one challenge that I see are the school budgets. I think I take a different tact on that than perhaps Jim and Jesus do, though. One of the things that I think we need to specifically take a look at is, one of the main drivers, as I've looked at our financial, is that enrollment is a direct driver of, of the budgets and of what we're allocated for funding through equalization aid. And so back in, I think it was 2007, there was an enrollment trend study that was done. And I got a copy of that and it's just amazing. Because what it does is it looks at the trends of our enrollment over the last 20 years before that and starts to look into the reasons for that enrollment decline. Now, let me say this, I think we have done things to slow the decline of that enrollment because what they had predicted moving into just 2016, 2017, we had slowed that. But as I look at it, and I'm the, I'm an engineer, I But as I look at it, and I'm the, I'm an engineer, I look, and their trend is still slightly declining, and we need to get our handle on that, because as long as we continue to decline, and I love the fact that we open enroll more in, and it's great, that stems the loss, but that mathematical equalization aid works against us when that enrollment declines. So we have to not be afraid to look into that and see how we reverse those and start to become an increasing enrolled, increasing enrollment school district again. That's our challenge. The other big challenge that I have is, and I'll talk about it a little bit in my closing, but, and I talked about it a little bit in this campaign, maybe a lot in this campaign, is I think schools, we have an issue. Our schools are starting to overreach and starting to reach into family issues, and I, I appreciate what Jesus is talking about with regard to protecting all kids, and I agree with that, but we need to be careful, very careful, as a district, that we are not crossing that line and blurring that line where we are starting to step into telling parents and families, caregivers, how to raise their kids. I think it's, it's a line that we need to tread very, very carefully. I am about supporting our kids, and we need to do that, we need to do that, but I think we need to do that in conjunction with the caregivers and our family. They need to be a part of the process. I'm going to really quickly, because I'm out of time, strengths, our excellent educators. We have such a wonderful community. Guys, we've lived here 16 years. I love this community, and I'll talk a little bit in my closing. I only get, what, two minutes for that? So I'm, I'm baking a lot into this last one. But extracurricular offerings, our music programs, community outreach, wow, where, only in Cambridge can you go and find things like this? Community dinner. We had the community dinner last Thursday night. What a wonderful opportunity to meet with people of our community. Thank you.
Questions have come to an end. Now each of the candidates are going to give a two-minute closing statement, and we will continue in the order, and I will ask Mr. Rivera to begin.
The hardest part about this race that I did not expect is how personal it would become. I was accused in public of being a groomer, of sexualizing students, of money laundering, of being a liar, promoting lying amongst parents. My character, my qualifications have been questioned. There's a suggestion of some conspiracy just by me moving here. My husbands and I, belongingness to the community has been questioned. There have been constant transphobic and homophobic remarks directed at the entire LGBTQ community in Cambridge on my social media page. That I'm somehow dividing this town because I'm in this race, that I'm somehow colluding with the board because of the appointment process that I have absolutely nothing to do with. There's a suggestion that I hate parents, which is absolutely not true. People have been rubbing it in that I'm not a parent to try and somehow disqualify me. My husband and I have been going through a very emotional and very difficult adoption process. The personal nature of these attacks have been very painful for me and for my husband. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Thanks, Fisher.
I don't know how many of you are on Facebook, but, and I'm not on Facebook a lot either. I don't do it very well, but I try. But I stated on my Facebook campaign page, one of the main reasons, or one of the many reasons, my wife and I brought our family, our children, to the Cambridge School District, is that we found a community of diverse families, families who weren't necessarily like us. And that was fine, and that was great, because we found a community that strongly believed that we had things in common, more things in common than we did that would separate us, things that made us different. And in that commonality, we were able to move together as a community. We love that. That's what made us fall in love with Cambridge, and that's the reason we stayed. The strength of our community is rooted in the diversity of our families. And I know, I know, Jesus and Jesus, I'm really sorry about, I, I'm sorry about what you've experienced there, and I hope you realize that when I talk, I am talking about defending families. I would never, and hopefully none of my supporters would, would accuse you, but...
They are your supporters, Jay. I mean, don't, let's not go down that road.
All right, let us just stop now, and we're going to finish our closing statements. I don't have any patience interaction here.
I apologize if I shouldn't have addressed it, I'm sorry. So instead of pointing out the things that made us different, there was an emphasis on the things that brought us together. For that, we found a community in Cambridge to be a place where we wanted to raise our kids. Guys, I believe we're at a crossroads in our school district today, at a place where there are people and outside influence who say all the right words. And you will hear, "I support all families." And what I hear is, "I support all families as long as they believe what we believe." And it pains me to say that, believe me. The concept of compassion for our fellow community member is being replaced with the concept of tolerance that is being defined synonymously with the term affirmation, which by definition means to hold is right and true. There's becoming no more room for kind debate and respectful dialogue, but instead is being replaced with a demand for compliance and unity. I believe that this is not only dangerous to the concept of family sanctity, but is a danger to strong schools and a strong community. I believe that strong schools begin with strong, resilient families and will continue to work to strengthen the relationship between our school district and its families.
Excuse me one moment. Sandy, have we lost the time here?
Yes, my, hit the wrong button. Yes, five seconds, it's time. Can you just...
Can I do my last sentence? Yeah, literally down, yeah. Right now, I believe that our biggest challenge can become our biggest strength if we join together. I'm humbly asking for your vote to allow me to honor, to continue, to continue to serve you on the Cambridge School Board. Thank you.
Let me say, I apologize for the time issue. We are not a well-oiled machine, so let us continue. Mr. Womble.
I want to go back to education, and I, I wish we had had a question along the lines of that topic that, that my colleagues had just discussed. Anyway, every child who attends the Cambridge School District is unique and special. Each of them have a personal development and learning potential, and each of them deserve every opportunity to pursue their personal path toward that potential. The modern advances in arts and sciences, neuroscience, psychology, medicine, the human spirit, have proven evidence-based teaching methodologies on how humans can best learn and develop into unique and productive individuals. That's our mission. That's why we exist, and there's no other priority that rises above what I just said. So today's educational excellence is based on that accumulated wisdom. We're teaching the whole child, and that is the social, emotional, and academic excellence is the gold standard in today's public education. And I wholeheartedly support, and I shout it from the rooftops, including in meetings, teach, teach the whole child. I think so, yeah. So teach the whole child, I believe it with all my heart, and I hope you do too, because that's why we exist. Please vote on or before April 2nd, and thank you for so many years of your personal support of me and my tenure on the board, and your support for our schools. Go Blue Jays! Thank you.
Well, let's give a round of applause to all three of our candidates. Let me just say, I want to thank Jesus Rivera, Jim Womble, and Jay Fisher for appearing here. As I said when we began, as an elected official myself for 12 years on the village board and six years as a municipal court judge, I'm not a stranger to differences of opinion. I'm not a stranger to people having very strong emotions, and that is part of what happens when we live in a democracy and people can speak out in a way that we don't end up in northern Siberia, of which all of us are aware. And I want to thank you all for turning out and giving your patience and careful attention to our group this evening, and at this point, I want to turn it over to Sandy.
I want to second Marilyn's thanks for, to each of the candidates for your willingness to participate in this forum. I want to thank Marilyn for being our moderator. We really appreciate your assistance in that. And I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I hope that you found it to be an informational forum that will give you information, as it has done in our elections in Lake Mills, so that when you go to the polls, you can go with an informed decision. I also would just want to put in a little plug for Citizen Advocates for Public Education in Lake Mills. If you are interested in forming a public education advocacy group here in Cambridge, we'd love to help you. And Donna Grzinski and Peg Storres are here from Lake Mills with me tonight, and I appreciate them being here. So again, thank you for coming, and Godspeed.